Everyone and welcome to our work session. I'd like to call us to order. Today is Monday, April 18th. This is our work session. Members present in the boardroom. Our members Jacobs, Donley, Lessons, and Bellamy. Online, we have member Holloman. Do we see anyone else online? That would only be Dora, and she's on her way, right? And Pat will be joining online. So we will announce the other two board members when they when they check in.
Madam President.
Awesome. Sorry, Dr. Bishop, I'm just about to announce you. We thank you. We also have Dr. Bishop, who is joining us online today. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So we'd like to welcome everybody. We have a pretty focused agenda today. The first item after our roll call is to our board request for information. And I know we have we have a couple of things that are outstanding. One, one has to do with the health fair that member Wilson was setting up. And I'm not sure. Maybe she, when she gets here, she can enlighten us on that. I know she has contacted Communications. And so we'll make sure she, my only question is, what does she need? I mean, does she need volunteers? Does she need swag? What does she need for that? So we'll follow up with that. Other items. I think we have pretty much covered. Let's see, community, that's the networking. We still have some questions on the networking, so we'll come back to that.
And she gets a swag and a couple of volunteers.
Okay, so she will need for that event. And we'll put it in Board Connect. She will need swag and two volunteers. And that's a board sponsored event. So hopefully, we can fill that. I don't know the date yet, but I will send it out.
On the April 30th?
Oh, that's it.
That's right there.
That is it. April 30th, 11 to 3:00. So between the seven of us, we should be able to cover that on April 30th from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And it's going to be, where is it? Where will that be at the? Mountain View Library. Okay, very good. Does any other board members have any information requests? Yes, member Donley?
Yeah, I was I think two meetings ago, I had brought up, we got an email from a parent who was concerned that they had discovered that whether this is true or not, that's what I was hoping to get an answer to, that the district had a database that was not available or accessible by parents in which there was an identification of what pronouns students preferred. And the issue there, of course, is that all information about students is supposed to be available to parents, I think by federal or state law.
Didn't we have a, that wasn't?
I didn't see that in the Board Connect.
I think that I recall Dr. Stock addressing that question about pronouns at the last meeting. And there was, it was a software issue.
Yes, I did verbally address that. There was nothing specific put in the Board Connect, as I recall, though. So if that's an ask, we can, we can follow up again.
Well, is is there, in fact, a separate database that has that information in it that parents can't access?
There is no separate database, but there is a portion that that involves nicknames and also the vendor software change did that the company pushed out does have a section for that. The principals have a detailed process for if that is a request that has to, can only be granted through the principal and the counselor to be able to make that change in the software. It isn't something that students can go in and do, or or even a parent doesn't go in. It's, it's, it's something that they use a form that where students can go and fill it out, talk to a counselor. But it is in the software, yes. And it's not the main thing. It's in the Q database, which there's a lot of things in there that are just records and things that are not always on the public facing side.
So if I'm correct, if I'm hearing you correct, then students can have nicknames put into their somewhere in their system for teachers to call them by the name they want to be called by?
Yes, they, students request that occasionally. And then there's an evaluation made. We never change anything to do with the birth record or anything that's the official student record. That whatever that is on the birth certificate is what it is, and that does not get altered.
So what I, what I'd like to do, member Donley, since this is our request for information phase, we need to list that again on probably on under immediate to get feedback to the board on that. Because today is not, we had not planned to discuss it today.
I guess the primary question here is, is there information that parents can't access about their children in that way?
And I think if we can put that in, in Board Connect, that would be great. I, I just don't I don't, I mean, I think we have it, we'll put it down under immediate and have it come through the Board Connect. That will give, and I apologize if I, I thought the answer that Dr. Stock gave before was efficient, but apparently it's not. So we will, we will put it back under immediate and get something to you, to the board as soon as possible.
Well, the, the representation was made that somehow not to be accessible for parents is a violation of law. I, I don't know exactly what that law is. So I mean, that's what I'm interested, make sure we're complying.
So we will get an update on that. I think I see two hands. I see a member Holloman and then Dr. Bishop. Before we move on.
Yeah, and I'd just like to put this in to be answered at a later date, unless the information's known offhand. In the past, when substitutes have worked 20 days in a row, they transitioned to becoming long-term subs, which meant a higher rate of daily pay and and maybe some other things, I'm not sure. What I've heard is that people that are serving as building subs that are going in every day to the same building with a prior commitment to be there, if they don't sub for the same
You're kind of breaking up, Andy.
Requesting, I don't. I may not be able to fix that.
Okay, well, we can hear you fine now. So you, you are, you were, we can hear you a little better now. So you were asking about the 20-day sub rule or process?
Right, I'll stop my video, and that, that might make everything better on a couple of counts. In the past, anyone that worked 20 days in a row was a long-term sub. It changed the rate of pay. My understanding is if they're still going in for one person for more than 20 days, they're being treated as a long-term sub. But if they're an assigned building sub, even though they're going into the same building with prior arrangement, day after day, they, if they're subbing for different teachers, they're not being moved to the long-term sub status. That's the question.
Okay, so I, we will add that to the RFI list. If it is possible to answer that in Board Connect, we will. If not, we'll go to the next option.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before Dr. Bishop? Let the record show that member Wilson is, has joined us in the boardroom. And Dr. Bishop, I'm passing it to you. I know you had a comment probably before the last comment.
Thank you, Madam President. I did want, I'm going to turn off my video as well, just so that the audio can come through. But I did want to share that certainly, member Holloman's, we'll get that in the Board Connect, we can answer that and show the multi-levels. Since the pandemic occurred, there's quite a few different ways now that subs are paid and, and made some increases in incentives. Because of course, we, we wanted our folks in the classrooms. But also, just to be crystal clear, we will address the pronoun issue, but I want to be crystal clear that parents have access to all their students' records. That it is the law that they can come in and request, even parents that do not have physical custody of their children can come in and request educational documents. And so just to be very, very clear that we are following the law in regard to student information and parent access. But we'll get the specifics of that vendor change, which caused some, you know, it was a new change in the, in the system, but we'll get that to everyone and, and also identify how parents.
Oops, did we lose you? Identify how parents access, okay. Thank you, Dr. Bishop.
Can access.
All right. Okay, any other board requests for information? Right, see, and Dora, we determined that you needed two volunteers for the health fair and swag, so we're on it. Okay, and that brings us to our discussion for today, which is item C, Mental Health Services Update. Did you want to, we have two lovely ladies here in front of us. So we.
Thank you, Madam President. And for the flow of the meeting, if I might, Dr. Stock is in the room, so I just want to let you know or anyone else that he's assisting me. I am in a place that has kind of trouble with the internet, if you will. It doesn't have high speeds. And so if there is a lag at any time, please just reach out to, rather than keep the meeting from going. Absolutely, as a requested, a request was made, rather, to have just a very high-level overview of our mental health work thus far. And we have Dr. Knudsen, as well as Ms. McClellan, Kate McClellan, here to provide that update. They are our new team moving into next year that are working closely together with behavioral and mental health, as well as physical health and our nurses. And they have some information to present. Again, this is not full ride, full scope plan, but this is 30,000-foot view in sharing with the board. And with that, supervising this is our COO at this time. So please, you know, you can also speak with.
And we continue Dr. Stock. Dr. Knudsen, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jenny Knudsen, and I am currently the Senior Director of Teaching and Learning. But as of July 1, I will be transitioning to the Senior Director of Mental Health and Student Supports. And I just want to thank you for having this work session. This is work that I and Kate are very passionate about, and we're excited to share where we're at and make sure we're on the right track and engage in this dialogue. And so I'm going to turn it over to Kate, so.
Welcome, Kate.
Thank you. And I'll start it off with just introducing myself again. I'm sure you guys see a lot of faces. So I'm Kate McClellan, and I am the Senior Director of Healthcare Services. So I'm over nursing and all of our community partnerships. And I just want to echo what Jenny said. I'm, I'm really excited to be here and to get to talk through where we're going. This is an exciting endeavor, not only for the district, but mostly for our students, so thank you. I think it's important, as we get started, we have a few slides that'll kind of help ground us in the discussion. I think it's important for us to have a grounded definition of what mental health is. So if you just want to go to that first slide. So mental health is the social, emotional, psychological, and behavioral well-being of students or individuals. And it's important to keep us grounded in this definition because oftentimes, when people think of mental health, they think of mental illness. And mental illness is really the presence of symptoms that impede functioning, whether that's our, our social relationships, our it's emotion, thinking, or behavior that can impede our social relationships, our activities of daily living and those sorts of things. So when we're looking at mental health, we're looking at the whole person, and we're looking at the student across the lifespan. And we're really supporting them in building environments and related services that support the development and maintenance of mental health. We're not just looking at those students that need support and managing symptoms, kind of our, our smaller subset of students that maybe is 10%, 5% to 10% of our district. And we're looking at all students. How are we promoting the mental health of all students in essentially every interaction? So to kind of talk about what that looks like in schools, I'm going to turn it over to Jenny.
Okay, so you know what mental health is. But when we're talking about mental health in schools, it really is about integrating our social, our emotional, our behavior, and psychological supports within a multi-tiered system of support. And you've probably heard us talk about a multi-tiered system of support before. We actually, in education, borrowed this from the healthcare field, okay? So we have talked a lot about it from academics, but just to make sure we're all on the same page with MTSS, it's really a continuum of, of support services that we provide all kids to support their academic, social, and behavioral growth in school. So with that, there's tiers of support. We talk about tier one, tier two, tier three. In the healthcare field, they talk about primary, tertiary, or secondary, tertiary levels of support. And one thing we're learning, as we're talking to community partners, we're learning this language together. So we both have these tiers of support in how we provide services. But what we're trying to do now is norm the language, so we, we make sure we both are on the same page. Kate and I have been doing it ourselves, because Kate comes from community behavioral health. I'm coming from the school perspective. So we're starting to norm our language, and we're learning as we have these conversations, we need to do this. So I'm going to kind of norm our language around MTSS right now. So tier one, we talk about it as being proactive. This is where we provide supports to kids, all students in the school. And tier one supports typically alone meet the needs of about 75% to 80% of our kids. So this is, for example, on the academic side, it's our core reading instruction. It's our core math instruction. On the behavioral side of it, it's our social skills lessons that teachers teach about, you know, how to ask questions, listening in class, you know, getting along with peers, those types of things. It's our school-wide expectations that all schools have. So you'll go into schools and you might see expectations like be kind, be respectful, and those types of things. Those are the expectations on a school-wide level. Tier two is where we provide additional levels of support for kids that aren't responding to our core or tier one across our systems alone. So this is more targeted, and in the realm of behavior, it's typically small group, social skills lessons you might have, or things like check-in, check-out, where a student might have a behavior they're working on, and they might check in with a trusted adult at the beginning of the day to kind of give them that pep talk to get going for the day. And they might check out at the end of the day to see how they did and maybe problem-solve what they can do for the following day. Those are tier-two levels of supports. And then about approximately 5% of our kids are going to need a more intensive level of support, and that's tier three. And this is more usually individualized for the student. In the area of behavior and mental health, these are usually individualized behavior plans or maybe therapy from one of our clinicians that are working in our schools. So those are the, the levels of support that we're talking about when we refer to a multi-tiered system of support, okay? So when we're looking at healthcare in schools, there are several things that we are doing, and it's important that we have, we, we integrate this with our mental health. We don't do it as a separate standalone program or service that we offer. So some of those things that we've read in the research, and you see some references for the University of Maryland and UCLA, we've been looking at the work that they've been doing, as well as other districts, especially in the Northwest, that we can compare ourselves to in size and, and just resources. So social, emotional learning is, is an area that, for especially tier one, is where we're teaching kids self and social management and self and social awareness. An example of what we do in schools for this would be at elementary, we have second-step curriculum. And so, for example, in the third grade classroom, one of the lessons is how to ask questions. So how would I ask questions of peers to find out maybe how they're feeling, or if something went wrong on the playground? How do I, how do I engage in that? Or how I might ask questions of someone else? Maybe I'm struggling in the classroom, and I have to learn how to advocate for myself and ask questions. Those are examples of lessons that we do to help kids in their behavior and their social, emotional learning. Another piece that is critical for mental health services in schools is positive behavior intervention supports, PBIS. And really, this is a set of evidence-based practices and tools that we use to really support the behavior of students so that we can, they can respond to teaching and learning in the classroom. So this is, again, a tiered approach, just like I talked about in the multi-tiered system of supports. This stems from, back in the day, PBIS was our tiered support for behavior. And what we called RTI, Response to Intervention, was for academics. We blended the two into a multi-tiered system of support. But again, it's coming back to those school-wide expectations. Classroom management, in the district, we use CHAMPs, which is a framework that teachers use to help them identify what their classroom procedures are and transitions are. And then targeted interventions, we might put in place for kids, like I described earlier, like check-in, check-out, and individual counseling. So it's that continuum of supports that is evidence-based that we want to provide alongside and with our academics. Another piece that's important for mental health in the schools is building capacity, really addressing the social, emotional, and behavior needs of students. It helps us create that safe learning environment, and it helps us remove those barriers to learning. Another area is promoting protective factors. So things that we can do to mitigate risks, such as participation in activities outside of school, supportive family relationships, physical exercise, health, diet coping skills. Those are examples of protective factors and things that we can promote and support. Kate, do you have anything else to add on that, or is that?
Yeah, and I think we'll talk a little bit more about it in this next section. But as we are looking at enhancing community partnerships, sometimes those where we overlap in risk factors or protective factors, we can collaborate when we increase community partnerships. So there may be somebody who has the capacity and the resources and is really the specialist in the area of, let's say, adequate food. If somebody has food scarcity in the household, can we partner with somebody to help them get what they need? So it's not always that we are the sole provider of these supports and interventions, but that kind of bleeds into the next section on enhancing community partnerships. And really, that these kind of, these last couple of sections, and really across the tier, they all kind of meld together and talk and communicate. So I would add that.
Thank you. Yeah, so our community partners, one of the things we've learned, we've had this opportunity, since we talked to you in February, we've been doing a lot of conversations with a lot of people. So with our community partners, we've been talking to other districts in the Lower 48. We attended the PBIS conference to see how you integrate mental health within those models. And really, what we're, we're hearing from, from folks is really engaging our community partners. It involves more than maybe just a clinician in your school, but how do we also engage, like after-school programs and stuff, and help build their capacity in supporting kids' social and behavioral skills as well? So enhancing that community partnership, this isn't just an ASD thing. This is really about us working with all of our community partners. And then finally, a focus on well-being of our staff and families as well. So we have to be well to help take, make sure our kids are well. So really, in making sure the adults are focusing on their own self-care. This includes setting boundaries, getting enough sleep, eating healthy, really starting to pay attention to what's within your control and being able to deal with that. The last two and a half years have been stressful. And so as we come back to schools, not only are the kids being triggered by things, but our adults also have, are coming back to school with things. So we need to address both the adults and the students so that we can have a healthy system to, to meet the needs of kids. So how do we, if we go back one slide? Thank you. So how do we integrate this into schools? Okay, so we've talked about, you know, what we're doing, but how do we integrate it? It is complex. One thing that we have learned is that you need to start with evaluating what's already in place in your system. So I talked about PBIS, SEL, MTSS. We have to see how that is working in our current district. So one of the things that's happening right now in partnership with the Special Education Department is we're going to be going through a Northwest PBIS audit of our district, looking at elementary through high school. What are those components of PBIS that we have in place that we're doing well? And where are the areas that we need to improve in so that we have a sound foundation as we integrate mental health within that model? So that is one of the things we're doing. I'm going to turn over to Kate to expand on the other pieces.
Yeah, and I would just add that this evaluation is especially critical right now. All of our routines were upended over the last two years. So to look at where are we at now and how are people, what is their current state and capacity to enter into these spaces with our students and with our practices? So now, more than ever, it's really critical for us to get a baseline of what are we doing, where are we at, how's it working? And then we build off of that. And so we talked about at the very beginning, like what is mental health? It kind of goes back into what is mental health in the schools and how do we get there? This isn't adding tier-three supports. This is across all tiers that we talked about, that, that level, tier one, that tier two, that tier three. How do we go from where we're at today to fully integrating mental health within that? And what we don't want to do is add one more thing for our schools to have to soak in. We don't want to add another program. We're going to add mental health as this standalone. Here's the effort, here's how we're going to do it. We really want to work within the systems that exist currently. So we've, we've referenced two articles on here that, that are really snapshots. One of them is not so much of a snapshot. It's a pretty dense document, it's about 200 pages. But they really help set kind of a picture of the other implementing schools in mental health. It's a brief document, but it's a brief snapshot and overview of what it kind of takes when you're considering integrating mental health in school programs. And the first is to really align your programs. When you look at your PBS, your social, emotional learning, your MTSS, when you're looking at all of those things, align them. Is the communication clear? Is it happening consistently? If you guys have ever seen those diagrams where there's a bunch of arrows, and they're all pointing in different directions, the goal here is to really make sure that all those arrows are pointing in the same direction, or all of our resources targeted and working towards the same mission, which is what we've been tasked with here. The other part of this is to really make sure that mental health and academics are almost synonymous, that one isn't coming at the cost of the other, that, oh, now we need to focus on mental health, so we're going to kind of put academics in the background. When we integrate, it's about focusing on the development of both. How are they happening simultaneously? And where and when needed, how are we supporting both simultaneously? And that's a complex ask. And then, again, clear pathways for communication. When you have 5,000 staff, over 100 schools, and 44,000 families, how are we making sure that we're all communicating clearly and effectively and that those pathways for communication are going both ways? The second is to really involve key stakeholders and families. So as we've been talking with other districts specifically, the biggest thing that they stated is if they didn't involve families from the get-go, it was a mistake. And involve planning, involve families in your design and planning. So hold off on your moves before you talk to the, to the families. And the second is to really involve larger stakeholders. So as we've talked with other districts, a lot of these efforts have happened and been guided by the state level. That's not to say that we, as a district, can't lead it, but it, it means that we are the convener of those who have a stake in this work, whether it's economic or legislative, or they're a provider, healthcare, behavioral health, whatever the case is, we need to convene the place so that we have all the resources to make the largest impact. Alone, we will not be as successful as we can be collaboratively. The second is to really engage leadership, and that's at all levels. We have leaders that are teachers, we have leaders sitting in this room, and we really want to make sure that all of that is coming together to align policy and practice. How are we making sure that the policies that are developed, the policies that exist, really support the practice in the schools and what's happening on the ground level, and ultimately, that it's supportive of our students? And the second is to really build buy-in and support. Our schools, both our students, our teachers, our staff have been through a lot of change in the last couple of years. And while everybody sees mental health as a priority, sometimes taking on one more thing can feel really heavy. So we want to make sure that people have an understanding and a belief in what's coming into their school, that they've had voice in it, and that they have ownership in, in how this is happening, that they can support it. They see where their role is in these changes. So it's really about prepping the system for change. And that's a key piece as you move forward and you're looking at design and implementation. The next is to increase staff mental health capacity. What does that mean? It means grounding everybody in what it means to have mental health in schools. Because if you ask somebody at a table versus somebody in a school versus myself, people might all describe it differently. So we need to all have a common language of what is mental health in schools. And we need to start with champions. So oftentimes, in other districts, what they've convened is their nurses, their psychologist, their counselor, their administrator, and maybe another champion teacher, who really wants to come in and be part of kind of communicating that language, grounding people in what the change is going to look like, and advocating for what they see as needed. grounding people in what the change is going to look like and advocating for what they see as needed. So you convene those champions at each school and then you have supports for them. So it's really about grounding then everyone in that common language and that both comes through internal supports and professional development across the district. And last but not least, Jenny mentioned this at the beginning, it's staff wellbeing. There's a kind of an age-old mental health saying, you can't pour from an empty cup. And so we really need to make sure that as we're asking our teams to be present in schools, that we're making sure that the environments that they're within, that they are in are supportive and safe to them and that they're able to enter into these spaces fully present and ready. And this last couple of years have been a lot. The next piece would be to collect data. So as we're implementing any effort, we need to make sure that everything is evaluable. We want to be able to show the board, the community, the teams, what's working. So what Drucker said it best when he said, you know, what gets measured gets done. We need to make sure that any effort that we're putting in place is evaluable and measurable. Otherwise, we could have really good intentions and put something in place that is not producing the outcomes that are desired. It's also about ensuring that we're not exacerbating any existing disparities, that as we're looking at this data, we're evaluating and making sure that what we're doing is coming from that equity and that health equity lens.
And Kate, if I can just add to that, is we're excited because through this research, we've made connections and we don't have to start from scratch. There's some models around program evaluation that we can look at to see how it would fit here. So we can really look at the impact of this on our students and our staff over time and be able to do regular reports to the board about what are those metrics? What are our goals? And how are we making progress towards that over this time? Sometimes we do that after the fact. This is the nice thing about this work that you've sponsored is that we can start before a lot of major work happens with us moving forward and develop that evaluation plan upfront.
And then the last key piece that we need to consider and think about when we're looking at embedding or integrating mental health into schools is that we are like really establishing and enhancing our community partnerships, not just with mental and behavioral health, but broadly speaking. And that we're clarifying our roles and responsibilities so there isn't an overlap and duplication of efforts. When we talk about those tiers, our community behavioral health partners, when they're coming in, what tiers are they going to hold expertise in? It's obvious in a tier three where we're having intensive individualized supports, that would be their realm, but can they offer and support in tier two, where we might also have counselors or other school staff being able to support? So clarifying those roles and responsibilities, so we're optimizing the use of resources internally and really targeting where we can make the biggest impact. The next is a focus on implementation of evidence-based practices. Our community behavioral health locally is really well-versed. Our state's done a really good job in supporting our community behavioral health sector to operate with evidence-based practices. But what we've learned from other states is that when they brought in community behavioral health partners, they weren't always utilizing evidence-based practices and they weren't clear on what the evidence-based practices were for social and emotional development within schools. So we need to make sure that both, we converse each other on what's working well, what our practices are. Then also make sure that what's coming into the district that we're supporting and making sure that there are evidence-based practices and we're partnering in that. Because I think I said this earlier, good intentions don't always create great outcomes and we want to make sure that we have a responsibility to our students, that they are getting a best practice. And the last is sort of one of those nuances, but it's how we organize and share information. Healthcare, mental and behavioral health and the educational system are under three different kind of regulating oversight for their practice. There's some overlap in settings, but we've all kind of grown up in these different silos and now we're seeing systems try to integrate. You know, when you look at healthcare and mental and behavioral health, I bet 10 years from now, you won't go to an office that doesn't have both. But that's a new practice in the last decade. So and now we're seeing that come into the educational sector and we have to navigate what that means and we have to decide how do we both protect information? That's our responsibility to our students, we talked about that earlier today. But then also, how do we make sure that what, when and how we share information is in the best interest of the student and families and is informed by the student and families? So we'll have to navigate and weed through some of those a bit more as we look at expansion and integrating mental health supports through our community partnerships in the district. So we've shared a lot of information and we plan for questions at the end, but I just want to take a moment to pause and see if, just with what we've shared so far, before we kind of move into the framework that really is the foundation of this, do you guys have any questions right now?
Any questions? I have more of a comment than a question. Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the information shared thus far and the work that's gone into getting us down this road. So thank you. We, there was mention of a PB, I want to make sure, PBIS audit earlier. I'm hopeful I got that right. And I'm curious what we're looking, what information we're looking to get from that audit? And then one information we might have from the supports that we've stood up in the last two years. I'm thinking this is going to be the second school year that we've utilized in school supports for at least some of our campuses. And so I'm curious what data we might already have or be in the process of getting and then what additional data this audit will tell us.
So I can tackle the first part and then I'll turn it over to Kate for the second part. So with the PBIS audit, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, this is through a group down in, I believe Eugene, Oregon. And they are going to come and they do a series of things. One, they have teams evaluate what they're doing within their own buildings. So there is a sample set of all our buildings that they're going to be looking at and evaluating. So what school-wide procedures do you have in place? Do you have school-wide expectations across your building? Do you use data, behavioral data? Some, in some schools, we have some other social, emotional learning data, school climate and connective data to help drive the decision-making about how we're addressing student needs. So how are we evaluating even by student groups, our discipline data? And are we shifting our practices to meet the needs if we're seeing, you know, discrepancies there? So they'll be looking at our data, they'll be looking at practices in the schools and they'll be looking at it at a tier one, tier two and tier three level. And then from that, that's going to give us feedback, like I said, about where, what are we doing okay? So we want to keep staying the course with that. Where are the holes where we absolutely don't have anything in place? And where are we going in the right direction that we just might need more professional learning? So that's what that audit is going to do and we can provide more specifics about the details of that. There's tools that they use for that.
Did you have follow-up?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I appreciate that that's helpful framing. So one follow-up on that in particular, it sounds as if it's going to be very individualized per school. And so will administration be able to tell what each campus is excelling in, where work needs to be put in by campus? And then I don't think I could have missed, I don't think I heard in the response, what data we might have as to the supports we currently have in place now already, aside from the PBIS audit? Is there data that will exist that will tell us what we're doing right now in terms of mental health supports, how that's functioning and kind of the investment that's been made? The return on that, thank you.
Yeah, so with the PBIS pieces and can you, I was focusing on the second part of that question when you said it, what was the first part about PBIS?
Oh, sure. Will the, will the results or the information be individualized by schools? Will we be able to tell?
Thank you. Yeah, part of it right now is looking at a sample of schools. So we're going to be looking at those schools, but then also at a district level. So while individual school teams are going to be evaluating, we're also going to be looking at it from a district lens too. So both, both levels there. And I don't have the details, we'll have to get more information about that, about the specifics and how we're going to get that back. Our partner in crime, Charleisha Wayne, who's the Senior Director of Special Education, that's a piece that she's working on and we're working on together to align these things. So again, we're not doing separate things. And I'm going to turn over to Kate to talk a little bit about the community behavioral health.
Yeah, and let me get clarification or request clarification from the President to, on member Jacobs. Are you asking, when you say is there data on internal supports? Are you talking about like general SEL, like some of the efforts we talked about? Are you specifically referencing our community behavioral health partnerships?
Yeah, so the partnership specifically, that was what I was hopeful to hear. If there's data available or something we can learn about what's already been done.
I could speak through what's been done. Really, those schools are integrating in such a way. So we have two different types of partnerships right now. We have an integrated partnership and a co-located partnership. So in a co-located partnership, somebody comes in and provides sort of that intensive psychotherapy service, that tier three, but they're not integrated into the school and community and culture of the school. And an integrated community partnership, that provider's there full-time. They're really getting to know the students, they're attending family events at the school, they're supporting with other items in the school. Their, their interaction is a bit limited just by the fact that they're a community partner instead of a school staff. But we are weeding through some of that to figure out, can we support it? How can we enhance it? What's, what are other districts doing? When we look at, like we talked about, kind of some of those silos and regulating oversights, how do we make sure we're navigating all of that to promote a, I guess, to offer safety to the parents? That we're not overstepping any bounds? So both are working well. There is not data currently to measure that and that's actually part of what this plan would help establish is how are other districts measuring where that's really helpful? In some schools, a community behavioral health partner coming in might not be helpful. They might want a different sort of community partnership or a different supportive school service. Whereas other schools might want more than one community partner and all the resources available. So it's really just going to depend and that would really come out of our planning, which we'll talk about a little bit more to, to make sure that all of that is evaluable.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So first of all, I just have a, I think I have a question in here, but I have a couple of comments. First of all, thank you for the work we are beginning. I just think, I just think that it's important and schools are not like other places. So the fact that you are educating not just internally but external, I think that's important. My question has to do with the first slide where you have the Positive Behavior Intervention Supports and then under that you have Building Capacity for Schools to Address Barriers to Learning. And I know that this is discipline, maybe more disciplined than, but it has to do with behavior for me. Restorative justice practices. And I know that schools, some schools are doing, doing great things with it. Is that going to be part of what you are fitting all the pieces together around?
Yeah, restorative practices as well as trauma-informed practices. It's really looking at how all of these things go together and aren't separate pieces. So for example, trauma-informed practices, we have a lot of tools and strategies that we use in schools that really are trauma-informed. But for staff and people working with kids to understand the impact of trauma, that's the why of why we might use CHAMPs in our building to build those routines and expectations for students who need that structure. So that is part of what we're looking at and we will be looking at, how do you integrate these things together? So you don't have some restorative practices that you might do, social, emotional learning, positive behavior supports, trauma-informed practices. I mean, it feels to people in the buildings like we just keep adding more on. So we really have to connect the dots to what Ms. Moffett always tells us and really make sure it's all aligned and show how they're related because they aren't all separate things. So yes, that is, is part of the whole process that we'll look at.
Great. And it is complex, you're absolutely correct.
It is.
So we are down to our last 15 minutes and we have another slide.
Well, this is Jenny's introduction was really to that last piece on the slide to set the stage about how we don't want to layer more things. That's the interconnected systems framework. So the interconnected systems framework is really an approach that integrates into what we already have. So instead of adding something else, a new trauma-informed care approach, a new mental health approach, it kind of combines all that. This is a newer framework that really works on not building something new. Schools can't take this. It works from a restorative lens and it's about integrating into what already exists. So you're not creating all-new language, you're grounding people in the same language and you're expanding its meaning and you're adding a few things about mental health. Did you want to?
And just to add to that, what I'm really excited about this is by looking at this interconnected systems framework, and we want to bring this up because this is a term we're going to be coming back to all the time in this work, is this really aligns with the PBIS work that we've been doing. So when we do this audit, the company that's doing the audit also sponsors the interconnected systems framework of how you're embedding mental health within that. So that's some of the questions that we have when they do this audit is, how can we start looking at that as a baseline as we move forward? So that was really exciting for us to learn more about that and that there is something that aligns with what we're doing so we can weave it all together.
Okay. So Mario, you said it best as we go to the next slide. What are the next steps? Where are we at and what are we doing? And really, as we think broad scale, we're going to need an integrated mental health strategic implementation plan. That'll really pull together what we're learning from other states. We don't need to recreate a new wheel, we don't need to recreate how our district is going to do this. Essentially, what can we see that's working well in other states? And for lack of better words, we can copy and paste and adapt to the Alaskan landscape, individualize and innovate to meet our district's needs, but we don't have to start from scratch. And then that really comes into take that learning and present it to the steering committee, advisory committee, that will really kind of oversee the direction that we go. And that steering committee, I think we, I mentioned it earlier, would involve families, it would involve staff, it would involve key stakeholders at the district level, it would involve state, it would involve other opportunities for funders such as our local mental health trust or other partners that we'd want to be at the table who have a stake in this work. And then from there, they, we would really be building out that strategic implementation plan. Our goal would really to be to have that idea. What is the scope of this work for this committee going to be, ready to start in the fall? And that we would plan through some of next year. Possibly the full school year, possibly not. We're still working through some of those details. And from that, the outcome would really be, what are we going to do tangibly to implement mental health in schools at an individual level? Member Jacobs brought it up. How are we going to get individual school data to talk about what's working well, what needs improvement? We want everything from individual school and school communities to the district at large. And we have some assessments that can operate at both levels. So really, it'll be about that steering committee creating a plan that can operate us moving forward in small bites. And then from there, we'll really build out the infrastructure for what's needed. We don't want to commit resources before we have a general or even maybe a firm understanding of what's needed. So this plan would really help us say, here's what we need to target, here's what's going to make the most impact. And we would target our resources, both financial, human, all of those things towards those efforts and we would be evaluating those.
And what's exciting about that is through the work we've done thus far, we've made connections with possible consultants who have done this work either at a state level or at a large district level that can help us navigate through that. So we'll be looking at, you know, going through that process of, you know, getting bids and stuff like that to see who could help us, which might also help us move the process along a little bit faster if we're working with someone who's, who's already gone through this. As we're moving on, some specifics related to Guard Rail 4.1 and then I'll let Kate talk about 4.2, is really to address all elementary schools will operate with at least .5 FTE of mental health supports. We have started that by creating and establishing the Department of Mental Health and Student Supports. So with me starting this job and reorganizing our resources here in the district so we can really have a laser focus around this work is step number one. So our psychologists, our elementary counselors, our BCBAs, which are Board Certified Behavior Analysts, our B-team through Special Ed, our SEL team, all are going to be working within this department and with health services and special ed to really have that laser focus as we go through. Part of the work we've done thus far is meeting with each of these groups to talk about what this looks like and where we're going. And now I'm getting, we're getting feedback from those folks about their perceptions about what's working and what isn't working and what are some of the barriers as we're moving forward? Because they're in the trenches doing the work every day and we need to have that feedback. So that's one piece that we're doing. A second piece is evaluating and coordinating services and professional development. So with that, in the, you know, Board Guard Rail Report, we got initial data on number of counselors, psychologists and behavior strategists at each school. So what we're doing now is I'm following up with those departments. We're verifying, okay, this might be. We're verifying, okay, this might be allocated, but what do we have in reality? Like, are we not able to fill some of these positions and really do a deep analysis of that? And our goal is then to see how many schools really don't meet the point five. At this point, I think it's around six or seven, don't quote me on that, but it's around there. And so if that's the case, part of what we can do going into next year is at least be able to hire on a few more counselors or, or other providers to, to meet that point five FTE as we're going forward. Now, is that point F-five FTE at every school enough to do this work? That's part of the strategic planning that we need to do to be more intentional about the resources as we move forward and that, that will be kind of resetting what that guard rail 4.1 will look like. But by fall of 2022, our goal is to actually have met that. And I think the guard rail said by fall of 2026, we can do better by fall for 2026. So that's one of the things and then we're coordinating the PD amongst all those groups so they're not siloed. And then finally, one of the biggest things is really looking at the roles and responsibilities of our internal providers, our counselors, our psychologists. We know between our internal providers and our community clinicians, there are not enough professionals to go around in our community to meet all the needs. So we have to be very strategic in thinking about what are people doing and really what should they not be doing so that we can support student learning in this way? So we will be starting to pull together our internal providers and starting to look at those roles and responsibilities so that we can think about how we do things differently to better support kids. And that really supports what we're trying to do and aligns with the community behavioral health providers. We don't want to do separate things, we're actually doing this in tandem. So I'll turn it over to Kate to talk about that.
And I'm going to try and rush through mine so that we can have some opportunity for questions. I'm going to move quickly, so feel free to ask for clarification at the end. And the, really the roles and responsibilities under guard rail 4.2 is really just a rollover from what Jenny just discussed, where we're clarifying it for our internal staff and then that's rolling over to what are our community partners? We want to make sure that there's clarity and role in the scope of what they're doing within the school. The next is that we want to engage our community partners. We could have a vision to have a community partner in every school. The reality is that there just aren't enough providers to do that. So we need to go along our community providers and see what their capacity is and their expansion and their desires. Are they, what kind of model are they looking to enter into? This is a new sector for a lot of our community behavioral health partners. We started this through a request for information to all of the community behavioral health provider community, just, just gauge their interest, their desire. So that's in process. And the last is to explore funding options to ensure sustainability. We don't want to add a bunch of services that have to be taken away a couple of years from now. We want to make sure that what we're doing is sustainable and long-term so that the student supports are impactful and strategic. And to be a good partner in that, we want to come alongside our community partners and figure out how do we do this together? And that's going back to what we talked about before, convening that steering and advisory group to look at sustainability across the board. So all of that to say, moving into our, our last slide is that all of this, this guard rail 4.1, 4.2, they don't happen in isolation from our larger, from the larger guard rail. And this integrated strategic mental health plan 4.1, 4.2, they roll right into that. You can really think that we're trying to get the flywheel going if you're familiar with the concept. So as a kind of a takeaway, really what's guiding us is that this is a really complex system, systemic change and we hope that that's really what you guys walk away with and that you understand that we're trying to think through all of those pieces collaboratively. And so this was pulled from the UCLA Center for Mental Health and Schools Learning. I'm going to just go ahead and read it. So current practices have been generated and function in relative isolation of each other and they rarely are envisioned in the context of a comprehensive approach to addressing behavior, emotional and learning problems and promoting healthy development. Organizationally, the tendency is for policymakers to mandate and planners and developers to focus on specific services and programs with too little thought or time given to mechanisms for program development and collaboration. I appreciate that you guys are bringing us to the table today to, to hear where we're going so that we can be aligned in this moving forward. We've, we believe that we are going to put forth a really comprehensive plan and that the important takeaway is that really this is a complex issue and in order to come from a lens where we are promoting both effectiveness, efficiency and equity and that we aren't exacerbating any existing disparities, that we have time to make sure that we bring the right people to the table and have a collaborative conversation around design and implementation.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions? Uh, member Lesens?
Just a bit of a comment and a question. I appreciate this work and these efforts. To the fellow board members, the, the UCLA document that much of this is coming from what I had passed along and it is big. I did not get as far through it as I thought I might this weekend. So I'm looking forward to, to reading all 200 and something pages. I'll get there eventually, but I think it's valuable. I think one question that I have for the future is how that $5 million that the board has allocated, you know, how you're thinking about using that? And maybe part of that is going to be those six or seven schools, you know, where you need to pull in more providers if they exist to your anchorage. But I would appreciate, you know, what that plan is. I would also appreciate understanding if there are things the board can and should do from a policy perspective. And I'm thinking in particular of school start times and the impact of, you know, of what the impact to mental health could be in that preventative framework? You know, if we actually aligned school days with students' circadian rhythms, how would we optimize student learning? How would we optimize our students' lives? And, you know, there's, there's a new book out that I want to read on, on adolescent sleep, but I just, it's something that I'm particularly interested in knowing whether that would help propel promotion of health, mental health, right? Not this sort of treatment of mental illness, right? You know, this is kind of like thinking about medicine, you know, the ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So I would like to know what things that you would recommend to the board that we do from a policy perspective? And maybe that comes at the end of a year-long committee study, but I would be eager to hear that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Uh, member Jacobs?
Just two quick ones. Thank you, Madam President. The first is how can individuals or who should they reach out to if they're interested in participating in the steering committee, whether as a member or participant? And then second, would it be possible to get a copy of the slides? I don't think it's on our internal or even the public-facing board connection. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, uh, member Wilson, uh, yeah, Wilson, welcome. And I need to, also for the record, Pat Higgins has joined us online.
So I just have a quick comment. I've visited multiple schools that have the community partners that are in their schools full-time now and I, I have received great feedback from the work that they're doing and with the staff as well as the students and the families. So just really excited to see where it goes.
Yeah, and I, I would like to learn more about the, the elementary today is, I mean, I understand that, I want to know what's also going on at the middle and the high schools at the same time. This is one of the questions I get most often recently at my community council meetings. They want to know what is the district doing for mental health? And now, so I really appreciate the discussion today because we all know now what we're doing, what the plan is and we can articulate that and, and, and create that common vocabulary. So I really do thank you. And then we have, yes, Dr. Bishop, I see your hand.
Thank you, Madam President. Certainly an A-team here, as you can see from their presentation, we are excited about the developmental or departmental rather, organization to really move this work forward. I, I did want to share with a member Lesens, we have the things you asked about in regard to school start times. In 2017, we did a very deep dive, nine-month study, worked with community groups to come up with new schedules and they, just difficult for change in a community to change school start times. Nobody really wanted the latest time, if you will, the time that is the latest that elementary has right now. And it is, you know, all the science behind it, the academics are behind it, different things. And it went to the board and, and did not, it was our recommendation to change administrations, but it did not pass at the board level. And really just gear up for that again, but it's certainly the, the information is there. We could, I'll request Katie Grant to share with you the work around that. It was a pretty extensive year-long work, but excited that there's additional interest in that.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And with that, it looks like our time, I want to thank our presenters today, you guys are awesome. And if we could get a copy, an electronic copy of this, this will be great. So I will now entertain a motion to turn into executive session.
Madam President, a move we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of legal matters and contract negotiations.
Just legal matters today, member Lesens, I mean, Halloman?
Better yet.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we are, is there any opposition to adjourning to the executive session? Seeing none?